We're ready to begin the introductory video. I'd like to call the November 7, 2023, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. I would like to read the Ethics Reminder to the Board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Commissioners at our meeting this evening. Okay, we come to the Consent Agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the Consent Agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the Consent Agenda? Is there a motion to follow the, to approve the Consent Agenda and to follow the remainder of the Agenda as published? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we come to Public Comment. There's one person that has signed up for Public Comment. If anyone else who is here would also like to address the Board during Public Comment, there'll be an opportunity to do that. But first, I'll call on Steve Spicer. And there's three minutes to address the Board. There'll be an orange light when there's about 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time's up. And we ask you to discontinue your comments once your time's up. We want to give everyone the same amount of time. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Commissioners, and hello, Mr. Newman. It's nice to see you in person after our email and telephone conversations. I would like to speak to all of you about an issue of great concern to my family and future generations. Buncombe County allowed disposal of hazardous waste in a landfill on property owned by our grandfather. We now own a worthless plot of land and the responsibility to maintain it. The county residents and businesses benefited from the use of this property as a landfill. Not one family, I'm sorry. So not one family should be responsible for taking care of the land. The county should. I am Steve Spicer, originally from Brevard, son of Alma and George Spicer, grandson of Awold and Levia Kerstein, who were born and raised their family in Buncombe County. Our family includes my wife, two sons, my sister Elaine Freibel, her husband, their two sons, and three grandchildren. The land I'm speaking of is a four-acre tract of land in Fairview, which my grandfather, Awold, allowed Buncombe County to use as a landfill in the 1960s and 1970s. The county allowed disposal of hazardous waste, which eventually polluted the wells of residents adjacent to the landfill. I have located several articles in the Asheville Citizen Times from 1972 through 1974 that clearly show that Buncombe County operated this landfill. Copies of these articles are included in a letter addressed to the Chairman of this Board dated September 8, 2023, from Sharon Alexander, and I have copies of these with me. I was contacted by the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources in approximately 2012 with a proposal to remediate the landfill. We participated in the remediation, and we agreed to place a declaration of perpetual land use restriction on the property. At the time, it seemed like the right thing to do. However, these four acres of land presents financial burdens and risks to our family and are unusable and have no market value. We are required to expend our own time and money to maintain the land to the specifications of the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Today, I'm asking that Buncombe County take responsibility for polluting the environment and groundwater and take ownership and maintenance responsibility for this former landfill. In effect, we respectfully ask you, as county commissioners, to now do the right thing. Our family should not be burdened with this responsibility, which Buncombe County should acknowledge as its own. Thank you for your time today.
Any other members of the public who'd like to speak during Public Comment? All right. All right, we have a couple of presentations. The first is Adoption Awareness Month Proclamation, and Commissioner Martin Moore will be reading the proclamation. And I believe Lizzy Schimer from HHS is here as well. Thanks for being here.
All right, Proclamation of November as Adoption Awareness Month. Whereas Adoption Awareness Month is celebrated to call attention to the fact that every child deserves to grow up in a loving, nurturing, permanent home and that this experience lays the foundation for a happy, productive adulthood. And whereas in Buncombe County, there are 341 children and 44 young adults aged 18 through 21 in custody in Buncombe County. Whereas 22 children have achieved permanency with their forever families through adoption, July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. Whereas during the month of November, Buncombe County Health and Human Services will continue to focus on children who need permanent adoptive families and honor families who have adopted children as well as those who work to address the impacts of childhood trauma through safe and stable forever homes that meet the unique needs of children in foster care. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners that the month of November 2023 be proclaimed Adoption Awareness Month in Buncombe County, and that all residents, community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and others be encouraged to celebrate adoption and honor adoptive families by increasing their awareness of the issues of adoption and helping to focus attention on the need for adoptive parents and the children who are waiting for permanent homes. Adopted this the 7th day of November 2023, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners, Brownie Newman, Chair.
Just wanted to thank you for your continued support for the work we do. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you. All right, and the next presentation is a Proclamation for Operation Green Light, and Commissioner Amanda Edwards will read the proclamation. And I believe Heath Smith and Kevin Rumley from Veteran Services are here with us as well.
County of Buncombe Proclamation for Operation Green Light. Whereas the residents of Buncombe County have great respect, admiration, and gratitude for all of the people who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the people who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our residents. And whereas Buncombe County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas Buncombe County Veteran Services offers assistance to local veterans, including life insurance, home loans, healthcare, vocational rehabilitation and training, disability benefits, and more. Whereas the Buncombe County Veterans Treatment Corps assists justice-involved veterans through a voluntary, court-supervised, intensive treatment corps that has supported hundreds of veterans achieving stability and healing since it was established in 2015. And whereas Buncombe County is home to the Charles George VA Medical Center, which provides high-quality care for veterans across the region. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas Buncombe County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now therefore, with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Buncombe County hereby declares Veterans Day, November 11, 2023, and the weeks following, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. And therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners proclaims recognition of Operation Green Light for veterans, lighting the Courthouse and Health and Human Services Building green in its honor from November 6 to 12, and encourages its residents in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. Adopted this 7th day of November, 2023, Brownie Newman, Chairman. Thank you for your continued service and to all of our veterans who have so courageously and selflessly served our country. We are forever grateful.
For your work on behalf of all the veterans in Buncombe County in western North Carolina. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the CDBG Quarterly Update. And Nancy Williams is here to help us with this.
Good evening, and thank you for your time to provide this quarterly update on the Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Revitalization Funding Program that we have for home repairs across the county. Just so you know, I've also provided this information in greater detail today to the Affordable Housing Committee. So this funding is an award from North Carolina Community, from the NC Commerce, and it's for $400,000. And it is a program that prioritizes home repairs up to $30,000 per resident. And with this program, it's designed originally to deserve, to serve a minimum of 12 low- and moderate-income homeowners outside the city of Asheville, because that's an entitlement community that gets their own CDBG funds. And this program, actually, we will be serving 40 or more homeowners at less than 70% of the area median income, which is how we qualify them for the program. So this is state funds that comes through from HUD that allows us to create additional funds outside of our general funds in order to take care of seniors, aging in place, staying in their community, taking care of repairs for disabilities, and so on. State-level grants can be challenging because it does have more extensive requirements, which is perhaps why there was no response to our first RFP. So with the second RFP, we were able to successfully solicit an application with a proposal to utilize 200,000 of the $400,000 that's available. And this was an application from the Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity with the proposal to do at least 40 home repairs with home, for homeowners at less than 70% of the area median income. They have said that because of staff capacity, the Community Development Block Grant requirements, that they could possibly do more, but that they would need more time. They are currently also utilizing the county's Affordable Housing Services Program funding as well as the ARPAP funding for home repair. So they are certainly utilizing everything that they can to make sure that we're taking care of our community and our residents. So in this program, we are running into a few roadblocks. And partially because this program was approved by Commerce, but it didn't really fit their program. However, they are supporting us in continuing this and making sure that we are moving ahead with this. So we will be moving ahead and hope to submit another request for an extension in order to accommodate Habitat's willingness to continue the work if they can get another year. And if we can do that, they think that it's possible that we could utilize another 100,000 of the funding and so that it would increase the funding that we could utilize of up to 300,000, which would be really great. So right now, we're anticipating being able to draw down 220,000 to 330,000 of the funding to cover the subrecipient costs for the grantee and the administrative costs. So a quick rundown of our activities. We have completed the subrecipient selection process, and we are now in the contracting process with Habitat, currently for the $200,000 for the 40 home repairs. But we are going to hopefully be able to create a contract that will allow for an amendment, if Commerce does allow an extension, in order to have that extra time and to be able to get more funds out into the community. Are there any questions or any comments?
Thank you for your persistence with this. This seems like extremely valuable for our community members who are in need. So thank you, and thanks to Habitat for stepping up to work on this as well. And I hope you will be able to utilize as much of that funding as possible and put it to good use.
Yeah, we're working on that. Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Great, thank you. All right, we have several public hearings. The first one is on the Personnel Ordinance. And Sharon Burke is here to help us out with this.
Hi.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sharon Burke could not be with us tonight, and so stepping in her place, my name's Amy Flaherty. I'm the Human Resources Operations Manager. And with me is Amy Davis, our Employee Relations Manager. So we look forward to speaking with you about these proposed changes. So with the Personnel Ordinance updates, in order to make the Personnel Ordinance more accessible to our employees, we are proposing to move some of the information into five standalone policies. So these five standalone policies, Amy Davis will go over with you shortly and give you a little bit of information about each of those. And then additionally, we would also like to propose a new policy, which is the Alternate Workforce Policy. And the purpose of this policy is to provide clear guidance to ensure consistency and equity among our just-in-time workforce. And the reason that we are bringing this to you for approval is because long-term temporary employees could potentially obtain some county benefits depending on their length of service with the county. And then the revised policy that we're bringing forward is our Conflict of Interest Policy. This is a manager-approved policy. And the reason we're looking to make changes is to reflect the Conflict of Interest Disclosure reporting that we are doing annually now with all of our employees. And to go over the standalone policies, I'll turn it over to Amy Davis.
Good evening. So first, we have the Employee Code of Conduct Policy. This policy defines our core values and it states our commitment to being a values-driven organization. The policy provides employees with the standards and expectations for their behavior and expresses the need for them to understand that both their duty as a public servant and their responsibility to conduct themselves in a manner that enhances the public's trust and their confidence in public and county government. Next, we have the Discipline Policy. Whereas the Code of Conduct gives employees instruction on what they should do, the disciplinary policy gives employees instruction on what they should not do. It provides employees on clarity with the reasons, the just cause reasons for discipline and the types of discipline that the county may issue to employees. It includes checks and balances to ensure that all disciplinary matters are handled in a fair, consistent, and solution-focused manner. Up next, we have the Separation Policy. This policy outlines nine distinct types of separation from the county, including three voluntary and six involuntary types, as well as any corresponding rights of appeal. Within the Separation Policy, we've updated the Reduction in Force Section regarding severance payments based on the discussion that you all had at the October 18 briefing. The revised language is shown here on the slide. This new language provides a minimum amount of severance pay while allowing Commissioner approval for additional severance payments and/or benefits as recommended by the county manager. Given this change, we request that you approve this policy. Next up is the Non-Discrimination and Anti-Harassment Policy. This policy significantly enhances the county's old policy to better support our commitment to equity and inclusion. Beyond requiring compliance with all the employment laws and regulations that prohibit discrimination and harassment in the workplace, the new policy ensures that we have alignment with the county's non-discrimination ordinance as well as our racial, wait, racial action equity, wait, no. Racial Equity Action Plan, sorry. And our core value of equity. That was a lot there. And up last, we have the Grievance Policy. This policy provides employees with a mechanism to address concerns and conflicts in the workplace in a solution-focused and productive manner. The grievance procedure allows employees to address issues at the supervisor level before escalating issues up their chain of command all the way to the county manager if needed. While traditionally, there may be a negative connotation around filing a grievance, our intent is that grievances are seen as opportunities to resolve problems, to improve the workplace and our culture, to remove obstacles, and to ultimately strengthen our employee environment. That was a lot. But those are our five policies that we are bringing to you tonight. And our next step is to request a public hearing for approving the Personnel Ordinance.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions before we, from the Commissioners, before we open the public hearing? All right, let's go ahead and then open the public hearing. I'll do that at 5:31 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the proposed changes? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 5:32 PM. Commissioners, is there any other information from the staff? Okay. Commissioners, are there any questions? Or is there a motion? And we can approve these in a single motion.
Just for, to make sure I asked the question, was staff consulted at any point on the personal conduct portion to that? Because I always know those get a little bit iffy. Is that a question for you?
It can be.
Awesome.
I'll pretend to be Sharon Burke for a moment. Yeah, so we have a policy review process. So our department heads, our Equity Inclusion Work Team, all provide feedback throughout the development process. And then at the same time, as we publish the materials and send them out to the Commissioners, we also publish them in-house to employees, and we send them out. So it has been sent out to our employees who've had the opportunity to provide feedback.
Did you have any striking concerns there?
We received one piece of feedback, which was an employee wanted some, had a question around the dress code. That is the only feedback that I have received or that we have received through official channels.
I'll look forward to reading the dress code portion, so I'm.
It's an exciting read. Highly encourage it right before you go to bed. It will help out.
All right, any other questions or a motion?
I move to approve the removal of the following topics from the ordinance and placing them in standalone policies: Code of Conduct, Discipline, Separation, Non-Discrimination, and Anti-Harassment, and Grievance Policy.
Is there a second? All right.
We'll need a second motion as well for Alternate Workforce and the Alternate Workforce Policy.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, is there a motion regarding the recommended changes to the policy on Alternative Workforce?
I move to approve the new Alternate Workforce Policy.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, does that take care of everything?
We're good. We'll see you back in January, February with the final round of edits to the Personnel Ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate it. All right. The next hearing is regarding the Procurement Policy. And Matt Evans and Ron Venturella are both here to help us out with this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ron Venturella, Procurement Manager for the county, and with me is Matt Evans, the Financial Planning and Analysis Manager. If you recall, back on October 17, we discussed a new, at the Board Briefing, we discussed the new procurement policy with you. And so tonight, we're bringing it to you for hearing and a vote. Again, we'll take a few minutes to review the current procurement manual and the policies that are included in that manual and the reasons for the new policy. Back in November of 2018, the Board adopted the current procurement manual and consisted of the policies, seven policies you see in front of you. These policies included detailed procedures, templates, and forms. Around the same time, we started using our current HR and financial software and also adopted, or started using, contract management software, which have made some of those templates and forms and procedures outdated. Out of the policies, the travel policy will remain its own and separate policy, and it will be coming back to you at a later date for a vote. The other six policies will be incorporated. The other six policies will be incorporated into the new Procurement Policy and are as follows. The Contract Policy. The purpose of this policy is to provide guidance for creating, managing, and retaining county contracts. The Gift Card Policy. It's to instruct employees for requesting and issuing gift cards and for the appropriate programs it can be used for. Next is the Meals and Meeting Expense Policy. It urges county employees to consider appropriateness, cost-effectiveness, and special accommodations when paying for a meal purchase, and while requiring records for compliance and audit. Then there's the Current Procurement Policy. It discusses a wide array of topics, all relating to how we purchase and interact with suppliers. And because of the detailed procedures in this policy, it's the one that's going to benefit the most from the separation of policy and procedures. The Procurement Card Policy details roles and responsibilities related to procurement cards, and how and when procurement cards may be used. And lastly is the Surplus Personal Property Policy. This policy establishes procedures for processing and disposing of county surplus property.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commission. So Raphael hit on this when we were talking through the Personnel Ordinance Policies, but we do have a multi-phased policy review process to incorporate all internal stakeholders. There's an identification phase, identifying new and new policies that are needed, or any revisions that are needed to existing policies, and then there's a team of folks that do pretty good diligence and research, and then we draft, and then we hit feedback stage, and we hit the Department Directors and the Equity Group, come back for more feedback, and then take it to management, and of course, adopt and implement as needed. So this new procurement policy, Ron hit it, combines six related policies, moves procedural elements to their own document. We also added language to align our equity goals internally with the greater county goals. And then, of course, we've edited the language in the policy, and they're mostly not substantive changes, and I can talk through those. Six policies were combined. If you were to take side-by-side comparison, this is where you'd find prior policy language and the existing policies that we've mentioned in the new policy. We have enhanced our language in the proposed policy that we're discussing today to directly solicit vendors who are certified by the State Office of Historically Underutilized Businesses, or who have self-identified themselves with the county through our various processes. Language is mirrored from a prior adopted policy called the Prequalification of Bidders for Construction and Repair Projects. It's a tongue twister. And additionally, Finance, particularly Ron, has worked with our Cape Department to develop a communication plan for outreach and community education related to procurement at Buncombe County. We have a new online-based vendor portal that we're excited about. It's coming online soon. We're going to be able to directly solicit the vendors. And Ron has been out on the streets doing his thing with some direct outreach to get folks signed into the portal. In the handout, you have a document that shows some line item changes. We added language to strengthen sort of applicability and the authority, meaning we've added some language around federal guidance. We've expanded applicability to more users, where we used to say applicable to departments. We now add basically any folks that are procuring on behalf of Buncombe County. We have created the requirement for a Procedures Document to be managed. We saw a need to add a section for fuel cards as a procurement method, and we had some specific language we wanted to add around food. The edits that we made, we're just to make it a little bit more easier for folks to read and understand. We were finding, as we were going through the process, that folks had a lot of questions, so we used this as an opportunity to enhance that for readers. The removals, we did a -- we had a non-appropriation clause, which basically would allow the county to pull out if funding wasn't available. We've moved that out of the policy and moved that into the Procedures Document as a nice-to-have. We've removed some unnecessary statute references, and of course, all the procedural language is in its own document now. So tonight, we're doing a public hearing for request, and we have a resolution for you to vote on. Do you have any questions?
Don't think so. All right. So Commissioners, are there any questions before we open the public hearing? All right, then I'll open the public hearing at 5:41 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to the issue during the public hearing? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 5:42 PM. Commissioners, is there any other questions, or any questions, or a motion regarding the recommendations?
Motion to adopt the new Procurement Policy and repeal Resolution 18-11-03, while we approve the new resolution.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Commissioners, before we move on to the next one, I just realized that we need to adopt the Separation Policy with the newer language in there. That needed to be actually adopted, and I don't think it was listed in the list out of Mandarin or the Alternate Workforce. So if you can actually make a motion on the Separation Policy.
All right. Is there a motion on the Separation Policy?
Second.
All right, there's a motion, and second, in support of the recommended changes on the Separation Policy. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we also have a public hearing on a rezoning request at Justice Ridge.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Capizali, and this is the review of the Justice Ridge Map Amendment. It's ZPH 2023-00031. So this public hearing was properly noticed, and all applicable parties notified of the meeting in accordance with general statutes and county code. That included a legal ad and the Asheville Citizen Times, notices mailed to property owners within 1,000 feet of the subject property, a notice on the county's website, and a physical posting on the site. The applicant and the owner is Myron Gottfried of Justice Ridge Farm LLC. It's four parcels located at 215 and an unaddressed parcel off of Justice Ridge Road and 1 and 5 Clara Parker Drive. The parcels equal 6.45 total acres, currently in use as an event center and a vacation rental complex, and is served by public water and sewer. The application is to rezone four parcels, two to the north along Justice Ridge Road, from R1 Residential to CS Commercial Service, and two parcels to the south along Clara Parker Drive from R2 to CS Commercial. You can see the current zoning map on the left side of the screen, and the proposed rezoning on the right side. This chart compares the dimensional standards of the three different zoning districts, and if the rezoning request is approved, the minimum allowed lot size would decrease, the required setbacks off of the property lines would decrease, and the maximum allowed height of structures would increase. The type of uses allowed on the property would also increase. So R1 and R2 zoning are primarily lower-density residential-type districts. CS zoning would allow uses such as clinics, cargo terminals, hotels and restaurants, warehousing, and vacation rental complexes. Surrounding developments include single-family residential, vacant land, and the applicant's event center and vacation rentals. The parcels are within an equity opportunity area, as identified on the county's Community Index Map, based on several factors that are shown on the screen. And staff recommends considering how all of the types of uses allowed in the proposed district could impact any historically disadvantaged communities in the area. Oops. Go back one. So after October 16th meeting, the Buncombe County Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning request for all four parcels. And I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here if you wish to see additional documentation or ask any questions.
All right. Thank you. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing on the proposed rezoning. Open a public hearing at 5:46 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing? All right, I'll close the public hearing at 5:47 PM. Commissioners, any questions, or is there a motion on the proposed rezoning?
My only question is about the southern parcels/structures. Is this all one facility? I think they're fenced off up to the north, but it's not super clear looking at the...
So the four parcels are part of an additional grouping of parcels that include the event center that are kind of sandwiched in the middle. My understanding is they're all under common ownership. They're all being used as part of that same event center complex. But if you'd like to ask the applicant, I'm sure they can explain a little bit better how that's all structured.
I guess the gist of my question is that those two structures are not a part of the residential development adjacent to it.
Come up to the mic, please.
That's my only question.
I'm Myron Gottfried, the owner. And if you repeat your question for me one more time.
My question is, so there's the...
The two lots on the southern part.
Right. Are they...
They are not part of the development that's adjacent to them. They were sold separately to a contractor who was building spec houses. I bought the spec houses before the development was part of it. So it's not part of the development. And it was such in my zone, it's kind of in a corner of my property, so I was very concerned not, you know, to be able to include it. So that's why it was done that way.
Just a quick question for you, Shannon, if you don't mind. Not you, sir. Just for modification and for thinking through these now and in the future, for considerations about rezonings impacting historically disadvantaged communities in the area, is there anything that you think we should consider or do to make sure that we're properly accounting for that going forward? And I understand that may not be a concern for this one. It's already listed as commercial for a big chunk of it, so we're not significantly changing too much, but I want to be sensitive to that.
So one of the reasons you're seeing this in the staff reports now is because it was adopted, some of those questions from the Equity Analysis Tool is part of our comprehensive plan, and it's really there to give you the information about the community characteristics, so that you can take that into consideration as part of the larger discussion, our staff analysis. It's the Equity Section now, but it's also community characteristics. It's comprehensive plan consistency. It's zoning consistency. So it would really be up to you all how you want to address those kind of issues.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the request.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. All right. We come to the County Manager's Report.
Commissioner, tonight I've asked Taylor Jones and Ryan Cole if they would give you an update on the burn ban and the state of emergency.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners, Ms. Pender, I want to go over the state of emergency real quick for you, a little bit of information on what we have that is affecting not only our county, but the entire region. So the reason that we are looking at the state of emergency is we have had significant drought conditions affecting our area for an extended period of time with low humidity, and we've had some adverse wind events that's coming in. Many of you may have seen the weather that's coming in this weekend. In front of that, we're going to have a, not to be a weatherman, but being a weatherman, I can be wrong most of the time. We do have a cold front that's coming down, which should precipitate some additional windy conditions towards the weekend. And so definitely getting out in front of that. Also, in our region, we have depleted resources with the Henderson County Fire. We now have a Jackson County Fire, a fire in the DuPont State Forest, and a fire in Cherokee County. And so currently, we have resources in Henderson County from Wake County, Gaston County, and Currituck County. So we've got resources from all across the state, much like we had during the Party Rock Fire. So what the state of emergency does, it helps us reduce some of our vulnerability and look at some vulnerable areas, especially with our partners, with the fire departments who know where those specific vulnerable areas are, and have worked with the Forest Service, the State Forest Service, to map some of those areas out to prepare for that. And it allows us to be ready for prompt and effective and efficient response with all of our partnering agencies, especially the fire departments, and coordinating with them and other agencies to expedite our response regardless of jurisdiction. At this time, we have multiple units. We have a RP rating, which is readiness plan rating for forest fires, and it goes from one to five. Currently, actually, it goes from zero to five. Currently, we are on a five because of all the project fires and the resources that are allocated throughout the region, and the State Forest Service puts that readiness plan together. So with that, with us being on readiness plan five, any brush fire that comes in automatically has a minimum of three fire departments responding, and most of those have five going, immediate, on the immediate response for that to make sure that we have adequate resources on the scene. It also, and the most important thing to us, is it heightens public awareness and makes for personal responsibility, because the most important thing that we can do is ensure that the public is able to help us protect them through preparing their homes and having them ready for wildfire that might be coming in, and I'll discuss that more in just a second. So how long will we be in a state of emergency? This will occur until our risk factors recede, which will be when we have significant rainfall. Many of you may have seen, as I said, not the weatherman, but some rain might be coming this weekend. That probably will not get to the substantial level, because the dryness is significantly into the bed of the forest floor, and we have a lot of duff that's in between the top of the forest floor and where the true dirt is. And so a lot of times, we have six to eight inches of leaf litter and debris that's there that can continue to burn, and until we get that moisture down to the soil, we're not going to make a significant impact. In this image, you'll see a common residential home that might be in the urban or rural area that might have debris around it. And so with this home, you'll see an immediate threat zone, an intermediate zone, and an extended zone. Basically, what we're looking for is to encourage our residents in the county, no matter whether they live in the urban setting, and as we had just the other day, we had a fire in Deverview on Sunday in the urban setting, very much in an urban area. But if we have the leaf litter that's in the area, or vegetation that is dead, even if it's tall grass that's dead, we're going to have a fire that's going to run through that. We generally have fires that run across the ground floor of the forest, but as these conditions dry up, they can go and get up above that and go through the trees. And so that's what some of this, that you've seen during Party Rock, they had a little bit of that the other night in Henderson County as well. And so that's one of our biggest concerns, but this is the greatest thing that the public can do for us, is have this prepared, to have defendable space around every home up to 100-foot. So this, if you, the conditions today, in Ryan's opinion, we are about the same dryness as we were, if not more, in 2016. 2016 is when we experienced the Party Rock Fire, as well as the Gatlinburg Fires. 2016 is when we experienced the Party Rock Fire as well as the Gatlinburg Fires. As you see, the, the illustration here, this is a progression of the Party Rock Fire. Just over 7,000 acres burnt over 13 days. Some days experienced over 1,000 acres per day that burnt. At the top of the ridge, you'll see a clearing up there. That is Schumont in Buncombe County. That is where most of the Buncombe County resources were located during the Party Rock Fire. And we had many homes that had to be protected by going in and doing abatement and clearing out and creating defendable spaces around those homes because they were not prepared, which took extensive time and slowed down our response. So that's some of the things that will assist in that, that will ensure those protections as we move forward. So some of the next steps in our state of emergency, some of the things that we are currently working on, our emergency management staff has worked on some of the sheltering operations to ensure that we have sheltering available in the event that we have to relocate people. We're preparing for some coordinated responses throughout the county and with other agencies and other counties around us. We are doing daily situational reports within emergency services and throughout our partnering agencies to ensure that they have the information most up to date of what is going on and what our conditions are with the weather and responses and what resources are available. We're keeping an eye on all of our resources in the region. The report we had today, for example, we have helicopter, two planes, and two dozers available in the region. That was this morning. We probably do not have that since the Dupont Fire kicked off earlier today. So that has gone down again, and we'll get that report again in the morning. One of the things that we want to significantly highlight is the Code Red and notification in the event of emergency. This is, this was a significant obstacle during the Party Rock Fires communicating with the public. And so we want to urge the public to get set up with the Code Red. Our CAPE team has done an exceptional job in getting billboard space through Lamar Advertising to get the messaging out, PSAs through iHeartRadio. And we, they have contacted the county, the campgrounds in the county to try to mitigate burning in the campgrounds and traditional media outlets, talking to those traditional media outlets, our social media channels, and slides at the Buncombe County locations, including Forty Cox. Can I answer any questions?
Commissioners, can you go back to the slide and talk a little bit again about that personal safety? Because I think that's a big takeaway for everyone watching. So if you can go back to that and just one more time, explain what we want people to do, but getting the leaves away from their homes and the debris and stuff away from their homes.
Yeah. So I'll let somebody in a magic box see if they can get it back up. But if not, I'll go ahead and talk about that. Looky there, there we go. And so the, one of the big things, and again, this is, a lot of times people will look at, look at their home and they, they want to, we live in a beautiful place. People move here, people live here to live in the forest. And so we want to be surrounded by the forest. We want to be up on vistas so that we can see out. But in those vistas, in those forests, if we're not clearing out around our homes, then there is, it's going to be extremely difficult to be able to protect that. So I'm going to give you an example of something, and, and this was just alluded to in Henderson County. If we have 30 homes to protect and we only have five fire trucks to send to those 30 homes in the initial 10 minutes of getting there, and not to say that we don't have other apparatus that's coming, then where are we going to prioritize those? How can we go protect all of those homes? And having that defendable space is protecting your home for yourself. And making sure that you have that 100 foot around your home, it protects you, it protects it for yourself. Saturday, last Saturday, I spent all day blowing leaves and, and chopping leaves and everything to get all of those cleared out away from my house. They all came back. I don't know why. I asked them to stay gone, but they're back again. But we are, and this weekend, I'll be clearing those leaves again. Because anything that's up near the house, if they're in the gutters, they can get into the eaves of the house and underneath and create an attic fire just from embers from away. What we need to be mindful of is it's not, even though we have a burning ban on, we're, we're looking for all of this, careless acts can cause dangerous situations. And it's our responsibility to protect ourselves and look out for each other to make sure that if we see something, we communicate that early to get early notification, and we look out for each other in doing that as well. Thank you.
Before you go, Ryan, I want to congratulate you on just being named the Assistant Director of Emergency Services. Thanks for your presentation, too.
And Commissioners, I do see, I do see one of our fire chiefs in the room from Riceville. I do want to thank them for their, really their partnership in helping us as we go through this emergency. So thank you to the fire chief that's in the room.
Appreciate all of you.
I got a question for Avril real fast. Given the drought conditions, have we seen or heard anything from the city of Asheville water or any other municipal water system, for that matter, in the region regarding just concerns over drinking water availability in the future?
I have not heard anything, and I'm looking at Ryan and the crew. They're saying, no, we have not heard any, any concerns at this point on the water drinking levels.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next item, moving into our new business, is a resolution granting an easement to Buncombe County Board of Education, INCA, intermediate school property.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in 2015, it's already popped up there. Maybe to make it easier. On the left of the screen here is the INCA Fire Department. That's located on a property Buncombe County owns. On the right is a portion of the INCA intermediate school property, which the county owns for financing purposes on behalf of the Buncombe County Schools. Back in 2015, the county did take title to that and entered into a lease with the county schools, which obligated the county to promise to reconvey the INCA intermediate school property back to Buncombe County Schools when the debt service was paid off or otherwise released. Because of the developments and Jacob Holm Way and Walk Off Way, there's been various issues to work with the trustee to get roads moved and sewer lines moved. So we worked early this year with the trustee on those obligations to revalue the assets under that bond package and release INCA intermediate school from that lien. So it's now in order to go ahead and convey that property back to intermediate schools. We're not coming before you today to ask for that, but we are coming to ask for the easement. And you'll see the INCA intermediate school property, part of the design for that, since the county owned both parcels, would just put the alternate access across our property just south of the school. So this is a request for that easement. So the deed attached to this resolution has a deed for the description for the INCA intermediate school and for that easement across our property south of the fire department.
Thank you, Mr. Free. Commissioners, any questions or a motion?
Motion. Motion to approve the resolution granting an easement to the Buncombe County Board of Education.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. Next item is consideration of the Homeward Bound Compass Point Village funding request.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Tonight, we have before you an item which includes, in the materials you received, a letter which was sent by the then Executive Director of Homeward Bound, David Nash, regarding a request for funding. Homeward Bound submitted this letter seeking an additional $195,000 in grant funding. This would be addition to, in addition to the $3 million in Buncombe County ARPA-FRF funding that the project has already received. And this is for the Compass Point Village Project, which is also known as the Days Inn Conversion Project. Compass Point Village is a unique project in that it is a construction rehabilitation project, converting an existing hotel into a multifamily for rent project that is intended to serve households earning less than 30% AMI, so deeply affordable units. This project also includes permanent supportive housing services components as well. Based upon the pro forma documents shared by Homeward Bound, the combination of deep affordability and supportive services will result in the need for ongoing funding support and fundraising by Homeward Bound in order to support the operating activities at the Compass Point Village site. The board did recently allocate the outstanding balances of ARPA-FRF funding, including setting aside 3.8 million for housing and shelter. Buncombe County's Affordable Housing Services Program does have prior year unallocated funding, which is an amount sufficient to fund the $195,000 request. However, the program does not offer the funding as a grant, which is the requested form. The Affordable Housing Services Program does offer a construction loan applicable to this project for which Homeward Bound could submit an application in the upcoming cycle, which is slated to open in mid-December. The project would be able in that cycle to seek a 20-year construction loan with 2% interest with deferred principal and interest payments from cash flow. And the request before you tonight is to consider the Homeward Bound request and provide staff direction on funding to be provided if the desire is to provide additional funding to the project.
All right, thanks, Matt. Commissioners, any questions or a motion? Make a motion to support an additional $195,000 in grant funding from ARPA for Compass Point.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. We look forward to that project moving forward. It's a great accomplishment for the community. We appreciate everyone who's worked together to bring it to this point. All right. Next item is consideration of a budget amendment for the School Capital Fund Commission fiscal year 2024, project recommendations.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. So tonight you have before you a project ordinance containing 30 projects totaling These projects come as a recommendation from the School Capital Fund Commission in their current FY '24 cycle. I'd like to spend a minute or so reminding you about the School Capital Fund Commission before you discuss and take a vote on the ordinance. So the School Capital Fund Commission is an advisory committee tasked with making capital funding recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. The commission is made up of two Buncombe County Commissioners, one Buncombe County Schools' school board representative, one Asheville City Schools' school board representative, and one member chosen at large by the committee. There is one major source of revenue for the commission designated by legislation, which is one half of Article 39 sales tax collected by Buncombe County. Over the next five years, we're projecting this revenue source to bring in about $30 million a year. The School Capital Fund Commission currently hears projects in September to vote on a recommendation in October to come to you for vote, like we're doing tonight. In doing so, they consider projects must exceed $100,000. They must contribute to safety. They must comply with any appropriate legal requirements. They must maintain lowest lifecycle cost, meaning a project may be required for the preservation and protection of existing assets, replace an asset that is obsolete or at the end of its life, or provide cost savings or cost avoidance, and/or remediates an existing projected deficiency. And then lastly, the project must improve the educational environment, which we lean on our school partners to help us with. So my team, Buncombe County Finance Staff, we act as liaison to the committee, providing projections and financial updates to support the committee in making its recommendations. Recent requests and funding history is provided on this slide. The bond market has been friendly to Buncombe County over the past few years, allowing low interest rates to leverage Article 39 sales tax. I'll discuss this idea further on the next slide. So as noted, the county has utilized debt service to pay for School Capital Fund Commission projects and currently plans to do so with this recommendation of $40.4 million. For context, debt related to school capital is approximately 45% of Buncombe County's current debt portfolio. School projects were a large portion of our 2018, 2020, and 2022 limited obligation bond issuances. So basically, our recent debt was fairly heavy with school projects. Finance staff evaluate cash flows, capacity, project spending, market conditions, and work in tandem with the county's financial advisor, bond counsel, and the local government commission to time out each debt issuance. This usually hits around every two years, and I'm anticipating that to be the same with this request tonight. As shown on this slide, we have $54 million in prior year School Capital Fund Commission projects, meaning projects awarded last year and before. Plus, we have this additional $40 million. That brings the total to $94 million. And based on our projections, that could equal $40 million over 20 years in interest payments. So this last slide shows the projects included on the ordinance. There are representatives from both Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools here to answer any specific project questions you may have. And we also have representatives from the commission if they need to discuss any further. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Matt. I'll just go ahead and share a few comments and then see if there's questions for our school partners. We, we did have a very thorough discussion on this. This is, this will be the largest, if approved, this will be the largest funding that we have been able to do on the School Capital Commission. And we certainly appreciate our finance staff for their due diligence. And, and Matt assures me that they always provide us a very conservative outlook, too, of the funding. And we took all of that into consideration as we were considering this. We also asked our school partners whether or not they had the capacity to actually implement these projects. And they assured us that they had that capacity with these projects that they had prioritized. So that's just a general overview of some of that discussion. And then, of course, some of our school partners are here if you have specific questions.
I've got one specific question. I don't sit on this committee, so I apologize in advance. Hall Fletcher Elementary School Project. I guess, I'm first off, just like taking it back that we still manufacture gas-fired boilers as a country. But I, that's, I guess my, yeah, my concern is, is buying a new appliance that burns natural gas, which is a volatile commodity that's, it's prices at like an all-time high globally and goes up and down. We expect it to go up over time. We expect electricity prices to be a lot more stable into the future. And we also just can't keep buying fossil fuel appliances.
So they're actually, that has already been purchased previously. This, I think there must have been a typo if you're seeing that they're purchasing one. There's upgrades to the HVAC system, but that was purchased, I'm not sure how many years ago, three? Three years ago.
So it's already sitting there?
It's already there.
Okay. It says new HVAC and controls with new gas boiler. Okay.
And so, but we did discuss, to your point, we specifically, I shared our environmental design standards and spoke about the things that we've talked about on our climate and environment committee. And so our school partners are aware of that.
Any other questions?
So because not everyone is on that, I will share with you all as the second commissioner serving on the School Capital Fund. I'm, I shared, and I'm still very concerned. $40 million is a lot of money. I'm not saying that our school buildings are not in dire need of the repairs and new projects. My greatest concern is coming from many of our school buildings are old, and they're getting older every single day. And there doesn't seem to be a great plan in place as to what happens when, for example, an HVAC system breaks. The response that I was given was, well, it can come to the general fund for repairs. And I'm not sure that we're being extremely good stewards of $40 million versus having to come to the general fund when those funds are already tight. So ultimately, I support it. I was not going to be the naysayer in this, but I still want everyone to know that I am deeply concerned about allocating $40 million when there are no plans in place on how to address when situations happen. I'm not talking about a FEMA-type disaster, but just something that we would deal with even in one of our own county buildings, what happens. And secondly, I stress this to both of our school districts. And secondly, I stress this to both of our school districts, we need to be very clear where this money is coming from. So Matt, I appreciate the continued reminder of Article 39 and where that comes from. As we know, our school employees have continued to come to us asking for additional funds to be allocated to the schools. And I don't think the vast majority of folks across Buncombe County understand where Article 39 and these capital funds come from. And I think we need to be very ready to address that these are two very separate pools of money that cannot be allocated to our schools to address salary challenges.
My only other question is, what is lobby security outfit, small and large?
So they, a lot of initiatives lately, unfortunately with the climate of where we are, a lot of significant resources are spent on security, and it's exactly what you're reading it is, is a school lobby. They're, I hate to, you know, bulletproof windows.
Right.
And Clark is here, and he can go into more detail, and I'm probably butchering this, Clark, I apologize, but it is exactly what you're reading. It is, and they put priority school on there because they don't want the, you know, what we're trying to keep, keep it on the DL of where we're doing the security.
The name of the school.
Yeah.
Secret, I see, okay. That's all I needed to know?
Mm-hmm.
Motion to, unless there are other questions. Motion to approve the budget amendment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Appreciate the schools for all the work on this and all the finance staff and the Commissioners who serve on our committee. All right. Next item, consideration of a budget amendment for FY '24 opioid settlement fund.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Per the opioid settlement fund memorandum of agreement with the state, opioid settlement funds were to be budgeted in a dedicated special revenue fund, which the county established in 2022. This fund was established as a multi-year project fund to align budgets with specific opioid mitigation strategies. Local Government Commission and the UNC School of Government have weighed in on the fund structure and offered guidance that this fund should be an annually budgeted fund by functional area and accompanied by a resolution to spell out specific strategies. These ordinances, along with the resolution, bring us into compliance with the guidance provided by the LGC and the School of Government by closing the previously established projects, which totaled $5,373,466, over three years, and establishing a budget by function addressing the fiscal year '24 funding for $2,711,995. No changes are being made to the strategies originally funded by the ordinance passed with the adopted budget.
Well, Commissioner said a different way. We were looking at multi-year since we know this money is coming over eighteen years. The state has come back and said you must look in one-year increments only. So this budget is meant to get rid of the multi-year and go back to annual.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the budget amendment and adopt the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, John. All right, the last item under new business is consideration of designation of a county commission liaison to the low-barrier shelter planning process. And I think Jasmine's gonna maybe kick us off on this?
Yeah, just very briefly, this is a proposal before commission to designate me as a liaison as community-level conversations move forward around planning the low-barrier shelter. And the goal here is just to have an opportunity for us to represent the discussions we've had in public forums and the votes we've taken on these matters. And as you all know, I served on the HIAX Working Group on sheltering issues. That group has dissolved at this point because its work is complete, and so this was a kind of a way to bring some structure into the next phase of the project, particularly around the low-barrier shelter planning process. I appreciate your consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, we have a motion, and second to designate Commissioner Beach Ferrara as our liaison to the low-barrier shelter planning process. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Jasmine, thanks for all your work in this. Okay. We've got some board appointments. Starting under the Energy and Environmental Stewardship Subcommittee, we discussed this some at our last committee meeting. I'd like to make a recommendation that we reappoint Maggie Ullman, but take a bit more time on the second appointment. I think we just want to consult with that member a bit further to confirm that they've got the time and bandwidth to serve another term.
Second.
All in, all in favor of appointing Maggie Ullman?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. The Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee.
I move to approve Melissa Harmon.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Asheville Regional Airport Authority, we need one, go ahead.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mountain Area Workforce Development Board.
I'll move to.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the Parks, Greenways, and Rec Advisory Committee, we've got two appointments.
Motion to appoint Ingrid Johnson and David Burdette.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have two appointments.
All of whom are recommended.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little, Lamar, do you have any?
It should be four appointments, sorry.
Four?
It should be, excuse me, it should be five appointments.
Five appointments, okay, okay.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, I was, we're never full on that board. I'll move to appoint Angel Redman, Banta Whitner, Kadea Ross, Scott Dennis, and Craig Loveland.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Appreciate everyone serving on the boards and commissions. And we now come to updates from the county commission boards and committees. Any updates any Commissioners would like to share?
I'll share some good news. Our Buncombe County Rec Department's receiving $4 million from the TPDF grant funding. So that's for the INCA Sports Park. And then also, on our Ag Advisory Board, we received a million from the North Carolina Department of Ag for more of our farm conservation easement, so it's great to pull in that state funding.
It's great news. Awesome. All right, others?
An update as much as just that, I guess, I noticed, thank you all for the very detailed, helpful, laser-focused conversation on what we can do around JRAC. If it pleased the board, I would go ahead and take some of the comments, a summary of what we discussed tonight, and take that back to JRAC to kind of request action items, specific things that we can do to move the needle on the topics we discussed, and hopefully have that for you by, maybe not next meeting, but the meeting after that.
Great.
On the Sports Commission, progress continues to be made on bylaws revisions and restructuring that Board of Directors, so more information forthcoming.
Just a quick update regarding sheltering, and a report out on the funding that we, both the county and city allocated to support twelve months of sheltering. On, Haywood Congregation has opened three additional beds at their respite unit, which is great, those are up and running. The Safe Shelter Site, which is located at A-Hope for the next six months, is doing a rolling start, and on their first night on Monday, they housed three families with children, and I think four adults, and they will be going up to housing up to ten families and ten adults. And there's also primary health care and behavioral health care being offered on-site there by Mahac, and Salvation Army is staffing up and continuing to expand their beds, both as part of the sheltering and code purple. So thank you to the commission for the support on this, and those things are, those things are moving forward.
I guess I'll give a quick one on the affordable housing, just kind of two items. The first is the public and the affordable housing development community will see a new kind of loan product, set of incentives for housing developers to deploy energy efficiency, renewable energy, electric appliances, that sort of thing, in their developments, or offering that as a way for folks to more easily afford that technology. There's a lot of new incentives from the federal government for deploying rooftop solar and other energy efficiency technologies that should really help make the decision a lot easier, and we just want to test out a way of just lightly incentivizing them to do that, and also do it in a way to where we're not complicating the process in terms of picking housing developments and kind of separating that out from just our main purpose, which is to build more affordable housing. The other thing, which I give big props to Civil and Matt Cable and their team for putting together an estimate of all of the housing projects that we're aware of as a community moving forward up to 2030, which is really exciting to see, and they kind of gave us a cost breakdown of what that's going to look like, again, estimates, and also gave us an estimate of the kind of the shortfall to meet the county's goals, but also to exceed them, and, you know, to 2030 and beyond. And as I say this, it might be worth them giving that same presentation to us at a future briefing, just to kind of, I just thought it was really important and valuable today's meeting, and, yeah, it's just great to plan around this for the long term, you know?
I'd like to report on today's meeting from the pre-K. We were fortunate to have three new people who are darn excellent members, and I'm sure will help us put, push forward. But I'd like to put out there to the public, we still have one opening, and I'd like, we'd like to see somebody apply for that. We need one chair to fill. We will be full.
Excellent. Any other updates? All right. Got a couple of announcements. November 21st at 3:00 PM, the Commissioner's briefing will be held at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. November 21st at 5:00 PM, the Commissioners will hold their regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. November 30th at 10:00 AM, the Commissioners will have a budget retreat at the East Asheville Library, 3 Avon Road in Asheville, North Carolina, 28805. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Chairman Newman, can I just mention one thing? For the November 16th, at the last meeting, we did announce the joint city-county meeting, but I just want to say that meeting has been rescheduled, so just want to put that out there for the public to know.
And the date of the rescheduled event?
December the 4th. That's a Monday.
And it starts at 8:30, and it goes till noon?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.